Coming off from the hug is what I'm...
On that high note.
We'll get around that prenuptial.
Let me call the public meeting to order. This is a public hearing. We have two items on our agenda. We'd like to acknowledge that the press and public are notified. I'm glad to see we have some interested parties with us. I'm going to deal with both of them at the same time. We'll have Douglas walk us through 2011-1 and 2011-2 if you'd be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all will recall, you saw both of these ordinances last month at the public hearing, and they both... One was referred back to the Planning Commission, and the other one was deferred at the request of staff to allow additional work. And they're both back to this month for second reading. The first is 2011-1, and this is the ordinance dealing with sandwich board signs. And if you'll remember, at the last meeting, a handful of questions and concerns came up about this ordinance. One of the primary questions was dealing with the likelihood of a business being able to put a series of signs close to the road and basically go from being a sign intended for pedestrian traffic and turning into a sign more geared towards vehicular traffic. The Planning Commission looked at that issue, and they have recommended that the ordinance be amended. And I think you have this language in your packets, but they've recommended adding the language that would require that the sign be no farther than 15 feet from the front door of a business. So this would... Those businesses that are set well back from the road would not be allowed to have signs right up at the road. It would need to be close to their front door. The rest of that ordinance remains as it was last month. The next ordinance, 2011-2, is the ordinance that deals with cellular towers. And I will just touch on really the staff amendments to this ordinance. And there are a handful, but I'll really just go into detail on the primary ones. The ordinance has been modified to only apply to existing freestanding towers. So this couldn't... A new tower could not be built in, say, a new place on the island under this provision. That's one notable change. The list of allowable agencies that could build such a tower has been narrowed to only the city. Initially, it had the federal government, the state government, the county government, and that's kind of been whittled down to now the ordinance is specific to the city. The zoning districts in which this ordinance would allow a tower has been narrowed down to GC1 only, which is a general commercial district. And then I would direct your attention to subsection 11C, which is probably the main change in this section that's been recommended by staff. And this change would require that any new tower that would be applied for under this amendment, that the design and the location be specifically reviewed and approved by the City Council. So no tower could be built unless that tower's design and location has been reviewed and approved by City Council. And those are the changes to those two ordinances.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I'll open the floor for any citizens or anybody who would like to make any comments on either of these in any order you wish.
Well done, Sterling.
Seeing none, hearing none, time has passed. I'll just call the public hearing to close. Thank you all for coming, and we'll convene the council meeting at 7:00, which is in eight minutes. Thank you. Thank you for coming, one and all. I'd like to call the City Council meeting today, April 26th, to order at 7:00 PM by Edict. We'll start. If you'd please rise, we'll have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Let us blow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful season we now enjoy. We are mindful that your hands have touched our beautiful island, and we are the stewards of your care. May spring bring the citizens of this island closer to you in everything we do. Please keep safe those that are in our public service. We cherish them all, whether they are serving this nation, this state, or this city. And we ask especially tonight that you look after Norma Jean Page as she deals with the loss of her father. For it is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, can you please call the room?
Councilmember Mermer.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Right here.
Councilmember Duffy.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Yo.
Councilmember Eady.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Haversky.
Here.
All right, next item on the agenda. I have the pleasure to appoint an officer to our roles in the Police Department. We have a motion to appoint Chris Quinn as patrol officer.
Motion seconded. Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's always the tough part of the day. Chris, can you slip a front hair and read a note? And you can recite after me, and then you can go back and do it. Please repeat after me. Aye, Christopher Quinn.
Aye, Christopher Quinn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified. That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances of the City of Isle Pums.
According to the ordinances of the City of Isle Pums.
To perform the duties of the position.
Perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
To discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
He was our peak service officer last year and is a native of the area. Do you live in Mount Pleasant now?
Yes, sir.
You're right close. Thank you very much. Welcome. Moving right along, since we have a lot to get through tonight. I'd like to have a motion to approve the journal of the previous meetings, public hearing March 22nd, and regular meeting of March 22nd. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any changes, corrections, additions, deletions, whatever? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, I'd like to bring everybody's attention to the fact that on Sullivan's Island, there's going to be a memorial, a tribute to... Oh, Lynn has even got it in color. It's going to be called Thompson Park. It's a tribute to the American Revolution, the battle site at Breach Inlet. It's going to be referred to as Battle of Sullivan's Island. There's going to be a public forum this Thursday, and it's going to be at the... Let me look here. I thought I had it noted. Oh, Sunrise Presbyterian at 5:00 PM. After a brief presentation and a brief look at the sketches of what's going to be the memorial, there'll be a walk across the street to see the actual sighting of where it's going to be positioned. There's been a lot of research done on this over the last couple of years by some very concerned and interested parties, and it should be quite a tribute to those Americans who in 1776, way back then, some of us might even remember that, you know, helped protect the city of Charleston and our freedom therefore. So I encourage everybody who's available on Thursday to please come forward and attend. It's an important event. And we're going to then... They're going to have the marker established permanently on June 18th. So if you can't make it this Thursday, you can make it on June 18th. Mark your calendars accordingly. And we have some flyers up here. We'll pass them out if anybody has the opportunity to take advantage of it. With that, I would like to ask for a motion to reorder the agenda to move the second reading of ordinance 2011-2. So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're under consideration of ordinance 2011-2. We had an original draft, an original motion that you have in your copy. It has been amended as Douglas reviewed during the public hearing. I'd like to have a motion to amend the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, to conform to the draft that's in our possession as of this morning, I guess.
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on the changes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have before us the amended version of 2011-2. Kind of a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. And waive the reading, I should have said.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on this ordinance? I think staff has done a credible job. It's a very tight ordinance, so to speak. And I'm certain it'll get us to where we need to be when we're all said and done, so... Any other discussion? All right, thank you. All in favor of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you. Now that we've gone that far, we need to have a presentation regarding the location and design of the communication tower. We have representatives from Crown Castle here. I think I see county in the back there. You guys never sleep, do you? Work all day, work all night, I know. So if you'd be so kind as to come forward. For Marie's benefit, please state your name, and I think we know you're from Crown Castle.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Yates here tonight on behalf of the County of Charleston and Crown Castle International. With me, I have Mr. Keith Powell, and in the back of the room, we have county staff, Bill Tunic and his folks. First and foremost, thank you very much for the passage of the ordinance, and I want to really thank both Douglas, Sterling, the town manager, to get us to this point tonight. And we also thank the chiefs who are with us tonight because this is very important to them. The purpose of the ordinance, as we know, was to allow for the installation of Charleston County. On the existing... There's an existing communication tower by the yacht harbor. What we propose, and part of the ordinance was passed, requires that you, as the council, approve the new site plan and the design. What the county is proposing in order to allow their equipment, and what Keith has done, Keith has passed out the drawing, the site plan drawings. I've taken the liberty of taking two of these sheets and just blowing them up so you or the audience could see. Presently on the site, as it is today, you have about 3,800 square feet of lease area, and you have 117-foot cell tower with antennas that go up to about 125 feet. It is presently all used for commercial carriers. You have a shelter here used by Verizon Wireless, another shelter with Sprint Xtel, AT&amp;T is on a platform, T-Mobile is on a platform, Wild Dunes has an existing shelter, and you have a generator. And then you have the pole right here. In order to accommodate the county's equipment and let it do what it's supposed to do to provide the public safety communication, what we're going to do is add about 800 square feet. We're going to add about 800 square feet to the lease area, so it'll be a total lease area of 4,700 square feet. Where you presently had, if you see here, you had the equipment of Altel. Altel has been acquired by Verizon Wireless. But this equipment will be removed, and we're simply going to move the pole position will be moved 40 feet to the north, right to where Altel was. The county will come in in the new lease area, in the new 800-square-foot area, and place a 12-by-24-foot equipment shelter for their equipment. Your new ordinance requires that for public safety, you have to be under 200 feet, the total height of the tower. This facility, the tower itself, is going to be 185 feet. The county is going to deploy on three areas on the tower. Starting at the bottom, at 150 feet, they're going to have a three-foot microwave dish. You go up to 168 feet, and they're going to have what we call two whip antennas that are approximately about 14, 15 feet long. And then you go up to 185, and they'll have another 14... Three whip antennas at 14 feet to come in right at 199. So... And again, they'll be serviced by their equipment shelter right there. In order to do this, we will be moving... There's an existing 10-foot sanitary sewer system. We're going to jog that around so it moves out of the compound. We'll do that in accordance with the requirements of the water and sewer district. So just a little brief overview. The hope is, and we thank everyone for letting this thing move forward tonight, obviously we want to get this done as quickly as possible in order, you know, to get the communication up where it needs to be in a timely fashion with hurricane season coming on. So at the end of the day, what you'll have is a tower that's 185 foot tall. It's the same design as before. It's a monopole. It will be on the same piece of leased area, leased from those Wild Dunes investors, and is simply going to be moved about 40 feet to the north where existing Altel equipment is. This will help the tower. All the existing equipment, and particularly the county equipment, we can get it closer to where the county... Where it needs to be, to the county ground equipment in order to transmit. And again, on the tower itself, you have the existing carriers that go... Commercial carriers go up to about 125 feet. At 150 foot, we'll have the microwave dish, then at 168 and 185, first the two whip antennas positioned at 168, and the three whip antennas positioned at 185. Any questions? We thank everyone who made this possible to get it all together tonight. Any questions for myself? Mr. Powell did our design on this and did all the legwork, and obviously Mr. Tunic and the other members of county staff are here to represent the county. So we're here for any and all questions.
Okay, I have a few. First of all, timing on this? When can this be executed?
We need you on the mic.
Timing wise, a lot of things are going to go in place immediately. There's a lot of work we've got to do, I think Mr. Yates kind of outlined, of moving of sewer lines, existing utilities, things of that nature that do take some, in general terms, prep work to get to the point where we can do the installation of the shelter and the tower. So immediately, we're starting on a lot of hard, soft work that's going to take place. The tower is probably looking, you know, two, three, four months down the road to the point of... We've got to transition a lot of existing carriers, equipment, to the point where we can work in that compound. Mr. Yates had mentioned Altel and Verizon. That's a... I think everybody's familiar with Altel and Verizon merging. There is some intricacies that have to go on there that they're working on to get their equipment out of the way, so there's a few logistics-wise to get that in motion.
And you have all of the rights and leases, et cetera, necessary for...
We are working those currently. We do have a conversation...
We have the general manager here from Wild Dunes.
There are conversations going back and forth in there, moving documents back and forth to get to that final form. The first step was really getting the zoning approved because until we got that done, it's really kind of hard to lay the hard corners of what we're having to do lease-wise.
Okay, and the Water and Sewer Commission is fully up to speed, and you've had...
I've worked with Mr. Jenkins on getting that, so obviously the next step, he's the next phone call I've got to make tomorrow for approved tonight, so bring him up to speed on where we are.
And can you maintain the existing tower while the new one is constructed, or is there a loss of service during that?
Well, no, sir. There won't be a loss of service. There will be a timeframe where both of them will be existing. And like I had mentioned before, it's kind of transitioning existing equipment over, putting in new equipment, and then decommissioning the old portion. So both towers could be up in the air an additional three, four, five, six months, just depending upon weather and how the work goes.
Yeah, one of the... Obviously, we do not want the residents to lose the service they presently enjoy, so the new tower...
We get the call first.
They'll call us a close second, but they'll probably... They know how to... They can go to your house. They don't know where I live. It's a good thing. So the new monopole will go up, and then the transition, you know, will have to gear up with the... Each carrier will have their slot as they transition their equipment over to the new tower and make their connection to it. Once they're all moved, the old monopole will... It's like a, you know, little erector set. The monopole is in sections, and it'll come down. The old one will come down.
Well, I think anybody who's been out there knows that's a very tight lot, and you're moving a lot of equipment in and out, and so...
Exactly.
And probably at the busiest time for the use of that property by the yacht folks as well as the Wild Dunes folks. So it'll be complex, but at least... Other questions?
Curious. So what carriers will be covered on this?
Certainly, Mr. Loftus. As we understand it, all the existing carriers will remain, and at present on the tower, you have Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint, and Xtel. The only decommissioning would be Altel, which has been acquired by Verizon. So you'd have those four commercial carriers, and then the county would come on. And what it also does, as we discussed, there will be some open space between 125 feet and 150. So say another commercial carrier comes along that wants to provide service to the Isle of Pums, there would be space for them also. In addition, as required under the ordinance, one other section of the ordinance was, there's also space reserved if there's a future need by the city of Isle of Pums. So we put that all into our planning to have everything available.
Well, if, you know, obviously with this happening, will this enhance service on the island? I mean, as a byproduct of this new tower?
The real purpose of this new tower is your public safety communication. Your existing cell service will remain the same. It would open up the opportunity if there was, say, a new cell carrier that wanted to deploy on the island, but really, no, the whole purpose for tonight's... For the whole exercise is to get Charleston County with their new system to help your public safety folks.
Other questions? Either side? Linda, please.
Yes, I would just... I'm just curious, what is the motivation behind leaving the foundation of the old tower?
It's typically what we do on a cell site. It's... We might, you know, it might be that someone later wants to put some kind of shelter or platform on top of it, so you have a foundation already in place. It's fairly deep into the ground, so for just future purposes, it might be a good staging area if someone wants to place their equipment on top of it. We will take it down. The entire monopole will go. It'll just be, you know, the base layer of concrete, which down the road, as tight as that site is, there could be a need where someone might want to put their equipment shelter or use it to bolt in a platform or something. So it might have a need in the future.
Okay. You have concerns on it?
Well, I guess, you know, there would be a couple of treatment concerns that I would have. One, I would want to make sure that leaving it there is consistent with other aspects of our building and zoning ordinance, because we certainly wouldn't want something to appear that's in conflict with either one of those things. And then I guess, just to make clear for everyone, that this is not a new tower. It is merely the refurbishing of one that already existed adjacent to it. I just want to make that clear because our ordinance doesn't allow for any new freestanding towers, the one that we just passed.
Right. The ordinance allows for either the modification or the replacement, and this is a replacement.
Just want to make that clear.
It is a replacement. So it will be... The tower will look like it's been there forever, but the steel will be new, and the old tower's steel will go away. So we fall under the replacement category.
Just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
Okay, well, no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Let's again modify the agenda you have before you and move forward the resolution, which is on here somewhere. I know it's here.
It's on the chart. Yes, it's under due.
Okay. I'd like to consider the motion to move the consideration of resolution, approve the location and design of the tower. Move that up to present moment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Linda, can you please read the resolution for us?
Resolution by the City Council of the City of Isle of Pums, South Carolina, approving the location and design of communication tower for city public safety uses. It is resolved by the City Council for the City of Isle of Pums, South Carolina, that whereas, City Council recognizes the urgent need to facilitate improvement of radio communications between firefighting, law enforcement, medical emergency, and 9/11 personnel within the city. Whereas, on April 26, 2011, City Council adopted ordinance number 2011-2, which amends Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning, Article I, General Provisions, Sections 5-4-20A, Communication Tower and Antenna Regulations, to provide an exception from the city's zoning regulations for communication towers for city public safety uses. Whereas, the amended ordinance provides for certain additional requirements for communication towers for city public safety uses, including the requirement that the applicant must obtain approval from City Council for the location and design of the communication tower. Whereas, Charleston County and Crown Castle presented plans for the design and location of a communication tower for the city's public safety uses on April 26, 2011. Now therefore, be it resolved that City Council, a meeting duly assembled, approves the location and design of the public safety communication tower as presented, passed and approved by the City Council for the City of Isle of Pums, South Carolina, on the 26th day of April 2011. Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Very good. Resolution passes. We're moving... I like these prints, so now we have something to work with. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
You'll be home before it sunsets. Still in citizens' comments, we have Mr. Sanders would like to address us. Please come forward. State your name. You have our attention.
Thank you very much. I am now an Isle of Pums resident again.
All right.
My name is Beard Sanders. Y'all... Some of y'all probably know my wife or her parents. My wife is Rosa Sanders, and her parents are Joan and Otto Martins. I'm here tonight speaking to y'all on behalf of the Florence Crittington Home. I am the board president. Quick question. Does anybody here not know anything about the Florence Crittington Home or where it's located?
You have to assume that those on camera don't know.
Okay. I'm the board president of the Florence Crittington Home. Last year, I was on the board. Quick story on why I'm involved with the Florence Crittington Home. It's a story about a girl named Margaret who was pregnant and unwed and did not have a place to go. Her stepfather closed the door on her and said, "You're no longer welcome at this home." She went to her minister. Her minister said, "There's a place down in Charleston that you can go to, and if you choose to have this child, you can go to this home, and they will provide you with the support you need to have this child. You can either choose to keep this child, or you can put this child up for adoption." Margaret chose to put her child up for adoption. She named the baby Ray. Ray was adopted four months later. Ray was raised by a loving family, educated, and grew up and had a family. But there was something missing out of Ray. He wanted to find his biological mother, and he did. And he made a phone call, and he said, "Margaret, this is Ray. I was born in 1963. Is this a good time to talk?" There was a long pause, and she said, "Well, I don't know." And then Ray spoke from his heart and said, "Well, I only have two things to tell you. Number one, I want to thank you for your decision, and number two, I just want to let you know I'm okay. I was adopted by a loving family, Jim and Rosie Sanders, and they named me Beard Sanders. I am baby Ray." So I have something real close to my heart about this place. Excuse me. But since being a resident and a new resident again, I'm asking the City of Isle of Pums if there's any opportunities for y'all to help the Florence Crittington Programs. I have a packet here that I wouldn't want to go over every piece of it, but there's one piece or two pieces I'd like to share with y'all. I'm actually doing a swim around Key West on June 4th. It's a 12-and-a-half-mile swim. Before I was elected president, in January, I was doing the swim as a personal goal. Since becoming president, I realized we needed some money coming in at our home pretty fast, and being in the pool for two to three hours in the morning training, my mind seems to think a lot. I came up with the idea of dedicating the swim to the Florence Crittington Programs. That's on June 4th. I have a flyer that I can share with y'all. If there's anything that the city can do, help me promote, or y'all, please share it with your friends. I have everything on email, so whatever you need, I can give it to you, which will[1784.88] I have everything on email, so whatever you need, I can give it to you, which will be in this packet. Also, the month of May, we have Adopt a Mom program, to where if you know of somebody that might have a heart for adoption, it's only set up to where you can donate for what it costs a home per day. And I think I got the figures right here. Per day, it's $125. If you choose to adopt a mother for a week, it's $1,000. Or a month, $4,000. Or trimester, $1,000. So I have these two events, and we also have the Farmer's Market, May 3rd, Mount Pleasant's Farmer's Market, 3:00. We'll have awareness booth. Awareness booth is my number one goal with the Florence Crittington Program. I want to raise a positive awareness of the home. There's so many people that still think, I have to share this with y'all real quick. Chip Kempson invited us up February to speak in front of the Senate. And I went to high school with Chip, even though he was a lot older than me. Not that much, except I saw him on camera.
He did the fifth grade six times.
Yeah. But Chip introduced us, our executive director, Lisa Belt, and one of our board members, the honorary Ruth Cupp. And the way Chip presented it was very nice, and he said that, "For all you senators that don't know, the Florence Crittington Home is not in Florence, South Carolina." And so that's, my number one goal is to raise a positive awareness of the home. It's real easy for me to do it with my story. My second goal is that we raise enough money by the end of the fiscal year of June 30th that we have showed a positive trend for the last three months, to where it'll make it easier for our board and any future board to go out and ask for money. And during these times, it is very hard to do. I don't think it's a coincidence that I'm in this position now. I honestly believe that. So also, be sure to pick up your May skirt magazine. There will be a very, I forget the saying of the guy that wears the skirt, he's very original. That's me, so please do that. Any questions before I leave y'all back to y'all's meeting?
Well, you've not only addressed us, you've addressed all the residents of the island. This will be broadcast tomorrow night, so I'm hoping your name and cause will be heard throughout the island in the next couple of days, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Leave this material with us. We'll make sure that everybody here gets a copy of it, and we'll see what can be done, if nothing else, through our website.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Marie can hold on to all the material. She never loses a thing, that's amazing. Thank you. All right, moving on. Reports for standing committees. First up, Ways and Means Committee. We met on 5:45 on Tuesday, the 19th. Seems like only last week. Oh, it was only last week. We heard from our treasurer. At three quarters of the way through the year, our budgets seem solid. Our revenue stream is just under 70% as of the end of March, but I'll comment on that here momentarily. Well, I'll comment it now. Our property tax, we received another check from the county, and our property tax budget will actually be met by monies already on hand. So while we had some trepidation earlier in the year as to whether property tax would be flowing adequately, it has been met, and our budget will be achieved already here in the middle of April. Our general fund expenditures are running at 68%, not 75%, which is what the calendar would show. So we're well ahead on expenditures. Virtually all departments are ahead of their day-to-day expenditures. I say ahead, meaning lower than, not ahead meaning. Further ahead. So we're doing very well. Linda and the entire city staff have been very diligent in making sure that they spend only the monies that are necessary, and I'm pleased to report that we're well on the way to meeting our goal of being under budget by the end of the year. Our monies are on deposit with very little interest, but fully protected, so that's the best I can say for the funds on hand. When we look at our tourism schedules, our state accommodations tax is still 9.5% greater than the same period last year. Our municipal accommodations tax is running 19% ahead of last year. That's a more timely figure, by the way, because the state accommodations tax only comes to us in quarterly chunks, and we've only received two payments from the state, but the municipal is current up through March. Our hospitality tax, which is food and beverage on the island, is running 9% ahead of what it did last year. So there are more people visiting the island, the residents are enjoying the island, eating at our fine restaurants, and enjoying everything we have to offer, and that's proving out in the income. We reviewed our beach restoration, not much activity there. The 53rd through 57th project will be touched upon by our Public Works Committee, but the funds are well within scope on that project. We've received no more change notices, and that's good news. City Hall renovation is well underway, almost complete, pencil list items only, correct, Douglas?
And we have some painting to do, et cetera, so that's nearing completion and should be well taken care of here shortly. We have one item that we have to deal with tonight of note, and that is our Public Works ice maker is no longer functioning. And if you've been out and about in the last few days, Public Works personnel need ice. We have secured, Public Works Department has secured three bids for the replacement of the ice machine, and the lowest bid was $3,046. So I'd like to propose a motion to spend up to $3,100 from our capital projects funds to replace the ice maker for the Public Works Department.
Second. I'll make that as a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on ice, ice making? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We moved on in our discussion to looking at FY12. I have spent a fair amount of time in a workshop going through all of the details one more time. This is probably the third pass through every one of the detailed budgets, both particularly on the expense side, first time we actually took a good look at the revenue side. I am pleased to report that the general fund revenue is expected to be up by 0.9%. I know that's hard to calculate, but 0.9% is near 1% in our forecast for next year, while our general fund expenditures will only be up by 0.5%. So we're controlling our expenditures well within our revenue stream that we anticipate, the consequence of which we'll deal with here shortly, but we anticipate no change in our millage, so our tax rates will be the same for the forthcoming year. So that's all very good. We have projects and capital projects underway and funded adequately for the next year, and our fund balances will be there to support all of that. Each department is at or about zero on their changes in expenditures for the course of the year, such that our expenditures will only be, as I indicated before, 0.5% higher than they were last year, or this fiscal year. So that's very good. And we anticipate coming in ahead of budget for the coming year. This fiscal year that we're in, that will roll forward. Those funds that we don't spend or receive will move into our fund balances, so we can increase our fund balances for capital projects, et cetera, for the ensuing years. So all that said, the Ways and Means Committee meeting adjourned about, what time is it? 8:35 on the 19th. We did make a couple of changes for council's benefit since we met, and that is by recognizing that we had additional income stream coming to us for the property tax. We were a little more comfortable in the property tax area for our projections for next year. We did increase the gallons of fuel in our projections for all departments from $4 a gallon to $4.25. Still a fair amount of risk, as to, $4.25 will be adequate, but we have been able to put that into the plan. We have accounted for any changes in the health plan, talked about it Ways and Means, that's accounted for in the city council's budget. The biggest change that you need to note, if you haven't caught up with your notes from Linda, is that when we met, we talked about paying off the lease on the 90-foot ladder early. After review, it looked like paying off the Mack garbage truck, the 2009 lease, would be the same principle, but will actually save us more interest over a longer period of time. So we are now in the budget you've seen here tonight, have the Mack garbage truck paid off accordingly to save the additional interest burden there. So we will continue to look at opportunities when we have funds available to pay down any and all debts that the city holds, but we're chomping at it as we go forward. So that's, in essence, the changes since we last met, and that's the report from Ways and Means. Any questions at this point?
Mayor, let me just comment just for the public. The next Ways and Means Committee meeting, we normally meet on the 3rd Tuesday, but the next Ways and Means meeting has been moved to Tuesday, May 10th. So for those who are keeping track, it's probably good to note that it is going to be at a different time next month.
And we'll hold seats for any and all that want to come. It's usually a riveting time, I tell you. Okay, no questions on Ways and Means? Let's move on to Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Monday, April 4th. Under Citizens' comments, we discussed our alarm ordinance, and had quite a discussion on that, is actually backed with the Planning Commission, and we'll be hearing more about that. We reviewed the FY12 capital and operating budgets, as you've just heard, and then we reviewed them again in the Ways and Means Committee meeting. Let me get through the pages of what we reviewed on that budget to the next item we have on our agenda here. Under New Business, we discussed the livability's court's request for a home detention ordinance. It was not an official request, but it's something we were asked to discuss, and it is something that we determined the city would not be doing. This is something Charleston County is not doing either. We discussed command positions in the police department. As you know, Lieutenant Wright, our assistant chief, has retired, and we're looking at some restructuring in the police department. This would not involve any more additional, any additional personnel. In fact, we would be operating with the same number of personnel we have now with one person retired. That has gone to the Personnel Committee to review job descriptions, and they'll be acting on that in the next meeting. Went on to departmental reports. In the Fire Department, there had been a small oil spill reported at the Marina, which turned out to be just a slight overfill of the gas tank. We saw some oil sheen, but we can't be too careful with the environment around here. There was a tour bus fire on Front Beach. That was, yes, a big tour bus, and it was on fire. I believe it was a banned tour bus, and it pretty much burned. There was alarm activation at Sweetgrass Pavilion as a result of a sump pump that had shorted out. That was taken care of. And Isle of Palms personnel assisted with wildfires in Olanda on March 23rd and 24th, and of course, assisted several people installing fire alarms in their residences. We requested the chief to start tracking EMS response time, and she's doing that. We're kind of fine-tuning what format that is going to be so we can capture that information. Those are the highlights of the Fire Department, Police Department. We had four young ladies from Berkeley County that were stealing things from a front beach business. They were apprehended. We had several underage liquor possessions, had some juveniles that were spray painting cars. In fact, they did damage to, charged with 14 separate incidences. During the month of March, dispatches responded to 3,900 calls, 2,955 were for the Police Department, 1,227 building checks were performed, 429 traffic stops generated, which resulted in 169 tickets. Also, Administrator Tucker advised us, and I'm advising you, please keep your bicycles and golf carts locked up, as we're seeing a little bit of rash of theft at spring. People are out, spring break, so keep everything secure. In conclusion, and this is really, really great, Chief Buchanan announced the Police Department have received its third accreditation from the Calea in Bethesda, Maryland on March The city, the mayor and I accompanied the chief and his team up there. We received a wonderful report. And keep in mind, this is a national accreditation. We are there with cities like Seattle, Washington, Bellevue, Washington, King County Police, which is the county that Seattle is in, numerous other large agencies. We're meeting the same standards that those folks are, and we should be very proud of our Police Department. So thank you again, chief. That said, our next meeting date will be Tuesday, May 3rd, right here in Council Chambers at 5:45.
My only comment is, Calea's Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation, if anybody doesn't understand the terminology, but our chief inquisitor commissioner was an associate justice of the Supreme Court of State of Wyoming. Not sure he knew much about beaches, but we tried to educate him, and the chief, we did a good job. He was tamed after we got through it, so. Thank you. Any other questions for Public Safety? None heard. Thank you. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, April 7th, here in Council Chambers at 4:00. We reviewed the monthly report. As everybody knows, our trash is still getting picked up on a very regular basis, and we always thank our crew for being responsive to all the residents' needs with regards to that. Director Pitts informed us that we had passed our operators licenses for our underground storage tanks, which is significant, so that we can keep on pumping gas into our police cars and fire trucks, and that's a good thing. It's definitely a good thing. We also had a report on the drainage project, 53rd to 57th. I'd like to report now that we are now finally away from the villages. The hole has been filled in, and there is some vegetation in place there, and we're moving along towards Marsh Island for the outfall. So that project is going forward and has not had any further hitches with regards to that. We then, of course, reviewed our budget items, both capital and operating budgets. Details are in the budget. All I can say is that we are reducing Public Works budget again this year, and so, again, kudos goes to Director Pitts for his hard work of trying to save citizens a buck every place he can. Well, then, we adjourn, and our next meeting is scheduled for May 2nd, at 4:00 here.
Very good. Any questions for Public Works?
Oh, let me just point out, too, besides, they had to pick up all the yard debris by hand for the last month, but we were supposed to get our cat back on Friday. I don't know if it's.
It is back in service today.
Okay, the cat's back in service, so folks, trim your trees. Go for it. Donnie can pick it up now.
I know Donnie's not here, and I'm not sure you're armed with the report from the hazardous material collection?
I don't have that with me, except that it was, I know that we had better than last year with fewer cars going through. So we delivered more material for hazardous waste, but fewer people came through the system. So from a volume perspective, we were good.
So we're happy with it, and the county's happy with it?
Mm-hmm.
And the citizens should be happy with it, so we should do it again next year. Is that the general consensus?
That is the general consensus.
Okay, good. Very good. Recreation Committee.
Yes, the Recreation Committee met on April 5th. Our rec center, as always, is very busy. This past weekend, we had the Easter egg hunt. I hope some of you attended. Huge success with perfect weather. The rec department, with the help of the teenagers, was prepared with 800 bags of candy. So I don't know how many kids were there, but pretty close to 800. We had the annual yard sale, also a success, even though there was iffy weather. All the spaces were sold out. All of our summer camps are just about full, and baseball season has started. Rehearsals are ongoing for Peter Pan this spring. Upcoming the end of the month is the Piccolo Spalletto Sand Sculpting Contest, which will take place May 28th at 9:00 a.m. Like all the other committees, we worked on the budget and managed to reduce the operating budget by $6,000 while no line- budget by $6,000 while no line items were increased. The annual Turtle Team meeting will be held on May 5th at 7:00. And relative to that, speaking for the Turtle Team, I'd like to remind everyone that the IOP lighting ordinance goes into effect as of May 1st. The turtles are back. We received, we rescued a turtle out by the pier a couple of days ago, and that turtle is now at the Aquarium Turtle Hospital. So if SE season develops the way Georgia and Florida is, we can count on turtle nest very soon. So remember, lights out for turtles. Our next meeting will be on May 3rd at 4:00 at City Hall.
Question, please. I think I read somewhere in the packet that the sand sculpting event going forward is not going to be a Piccolo. Any explanation of--
Linda?
I'm not prepared to explain that, but I will certainly find out the answer to that question.
Did you see that?
I did read that.
Yeah, I did too, but I don't remember.
That's always a huge event.
Yes.
It's the same thing as it was last year. It was last year. It was not part of the Piccolo Spoleto.
Right.
We call it Piccolo Spoleto, but they don't.
It was at one time an event of Piccolo Spoleto, and it just became, you know, Piccolo Spoleto goes to the beach. Last year, that got dropped. I can't recall what the reason was right off the top of my head, but--
I can't either. I'll have to check on it and get the answer to you first.
Regardless, we're going to have sand sculpture.
I always suggest that we start thinking of our own name for that. So, I know we've got some creative minds out there, so come up with an idea.
Send us your messages. Send us your names. Sand sculpting sounds pretty good to me, frankly, but--
Sandcastles are us.
Sandcastles are us, all right. Personnel Committee, please report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The regular meeting of the Personnel Committee was held at 5:45 Wednesday, April 13th. Attending were Councilman Battelli, meeting and Chair Thomas, Administrator Tucker, Assistant Administrator Zivan, and the City Clerk Copeland. The meeting was called to order. From the March meeting, we're passed unanimously. There were no citizen comments. The city's administrators' 2011 performance objectives were passed unanimously. This was followed by a considerable discussion of the FY 2011, 2012 operating capital budget and building department. Under New Business, Councilman Peating moved that Bev Ballow and Dr. Reed Wiseman be appointed to the Ad Hoc Water Committee. This was passed unanimously, and I would like to make a motion that council does the same.
Okay, motion seconded. Any discussion on this? We've lost two members of that committee already, and Bev really would be an asset there, and if Dr. Wiseman is interested in--
Yes.
He's already confirmed?
Yes.
So that's an excellent addition, so. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard.
This was followed by a discussion of the command positions of the Police Department, brought about by the retirement of Lieutenant Wright. The chief was asked to present the proposed organization changes to the Safety Committee, including organization charts for their concurrence prior to presenting this to the Personnel Committee for salary ranges and job description approval prior to presentation to the City Council for approval. The March safety winners are Recreation Department Will McElhany, Fire Department Jason Smith, Police Department Derek Ambus, and Public Works Joseph Washington. There was no executive session required, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:45. The next meeting will be at 5:45 Wednesday, May 4th.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Personnel? None heard. All right, Real Property Committee, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property Committee met on Thursday, April 7th at 8:30 a.m. First, the meeting started off with a presentation from Wesley Westmoreland from South Carolina Electric and Gas, discussing upgrades of the system that they are proposing. One is allow technology to allow for SCNG to find problems quicker and identify what the problem is and dispatch. So basically, using technology, they will be able to fix problems quicker and result in, you know, less outages and we're faster up, back on service like that. So what they're doing is they're completing burial lines on a forest trail, and it's an ongoing problem of burial lines, so. Also with that is that in order to upgrade the system, SCNG will be installing a new 105-foot tower on their property right out adjacent to City Hall, on that piece of property, and that's well within their lease arrangement with the city, so they will be moving on that, and that will allow the height to, for the different sensors to pick up different signals to report outages, and again, improve this turnaround in service as far as keeping the power on Isle Palms. Next on the agenda was the beach restoration. They're still working on that as far as coming back and finishing comments on that. Next was the dredging update. Basically, it looks like, we had a presentation from Jack Walker and Joe Eric from G E L Consultants, and basically, it looks like the Army Corps of Engineers really tried to discourage Isle Palms from using the spoil site on Goat Island, and encouraging us to look at Little Goat Island spoil site. Part of the problem on Little Goat, on Goat Island is that the spoil site was damaged by a third party, and for us to use that site, Army Corps of Engineers would ask us to do significant upgrades to repair that site, and it could be upward of a couple hundred thousand dollars even. So as far as the dredging project is going along and moving along, Councilman Stone made a motion to pass the dredging depth to be 12 feet, and that was passed unanimously, and do we need to bring that in front of council? No?
Okay.
Moving along on New Business, there was a discussion brought on about parking lot leases, and basically, the conversation was, you know, what is the best option for the city? Are we cashering all the income we possibly can to be used for different projects? After a lot of discussion on that, it was basically looking at several options for the city to review. One option is stay the way we are right now. We have two years left on the lease. Two would be renegotiate the lease, we try to secure higher income. Or three, look at other options besides that. And I'd like to bring in for the City Council to get a sentiment of what direction we would like to look at as far as moving forward, as far as changing the parking lot leases at this time.
As Michael has indicated, there are two more seasons, if you will, on the existing lease. We're in the first of those two seasons, and so there'd be one season left, 2012, whereupon probably this time next year or before this time next year, we'll be going out for an RFP, trying to figure out what the future holds on parking, or choosing to do it ourselves if that was the option that council so elected. We could, if the current leaseholder was interested, we could open up a discussion to extend his lease and renegotiate the terms and things of that nature in order to drive a higher income stream for the city, or not. We also could just not, I don't recommend it, we could actually terminate his lease after proper notice and then start over again. So those are basically the three options we discussed, and we took no action on them without we discussing here, but to hear from council as far as what the general interest was. I think, I mean, I'll speak first. I just sort of let it run its course. Where it is right now through 11 and 12, we're in the middle of a parking initiative, trying to understand what parking changes we're going to be making on the island, which may remain, may have a dramatic impact on the activity at the Front Beach parking facilities, both the county and those ours. So until we have a better handle on what that is, I just sort of not try and reshape something we don't really know what it's going to look like.
I agree with that thinking. I think that we're in the one season, we only have one season left. The planning isn't done on the parking plan, so it probably will take till next season to get that done. So I'd leave it the way it is.
Okay, any other comments? Marty?
I agree also. We've got an existing contract. I don't know what message it would send to other folks that deal with the city if we just decide to terminate a contract so we can get a better deal.
No, we could, the current leaseholder did approach us a while ago about extending the terms of his lease, and at that time, we said no, we could open a discussion, which would be, not only terms, but it would have to be more financially beneficial to us also. But any other comments? None heard, I think--
I've expressed my comments on this before, but just to reiterate them, again, my comments have nothing to do with the leaseholder, I think, who's doing a great job. I do think the city's leaving an awful lot of money on the table, and at some point in the future, we need to maximize all of our revenue streams. And I think to, I don't think running a parking lot is an extremely complicated operation. I don't think it's a high-risk operation. I don't think it requires an excessive amount of administrative time. And to be putting the kind of numbers out that we've discussed before, in the six-figure range to run a parking lot just seems a little excessive to me. I think the city could get a better deal. Whether we need to do that now, I think is reasonable for, you know, that's reasonable for discussion. I do think at some point, I don't know if Real Property has talked about this, about putting some type of gate there that records how many cars go in and out a day. This is a total cash operation, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything, don't get me wrong, but it's a cash operation. Anyone that's been involved in a cash business knows you have to have strong internal controls to make sure that cash isn't kind of walking out of there. And I just wonder if that has been talked about or looked into.
Not to my knowledge.
No, we have not discussed it.
But it's a fruitful area of concern, any cash business, whether parking is just a small cash, is worthwhile. And that would be on, I mean, the current leaseholder isn't going to go to the expense of putting in a lot of controls, so we'd have to do all of that. With that said, I think my recommendation is we leave it the way it is, work to, and Linda has already started exploring what it would take for the city to operate that lot in the future, and we can continue that pursuit. And at the appropriate time, you would decide to do it ourselves, or go for a bid, or go for a bid, see what that brings, and then choose to accept a bid or do it ourselves also. We need some time to prepare all that, so.
Well, I'd like to add, if we are going to go in at, you know, to look at all the options, and if we are going to do it ourselves, I think it would be very prudent for the city to study what is being done right now for this season and next season, so we do have that knowledge of the operation if we should decide to take that in-house at some point down the road. And so I really think it's something that we should probably make, you know, we may or may not do it, but if we don't study it and really know what, have our arms around it, we're not going to be really, if that's the best way to go for the city. So I do think it's going to take considerable due diligence now and next year for us to make the best decision for the city.
Good. I think Real Property, we can scope out the items that you're talking about as far as what we need to understand about operating the lot as it's operated now, and how it could operate in the future with the counters and other factors like that. We can do that in the next couple of months, and be prepared to do something at the end of the existing lease. So, that said--
Move on. Next, Real Property? We're not done yet.
Did we make a motion?
Did you make a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I didn't make a motion.
You did not.
No, we did not. We need a motion. I think we have a consensus to--
Right.
--without a motion.
Okay.
On, next on the Real Property was green belt funding. The city has been looking for opportunities to take advantage of the half-cent green, half-cent tax that provide green belt for various communities, and compliment Mayor Cronin for being extremely creative, and hopefully it will pay off as far as finding ways to spend that money, which is already in the bank in our name, but we can't touch it unless we have the right project.
Right.
So with that said, I'd like to move back to the resolution of-- I'll have to hear a second. All right, sorry. Resolution as far as using green belt monies, and Linda, you're great at reading.
She's prepared.
Resolution by the City Council of the City of Isle Palms, South Carolina, to pursue green belt funding for the acquisition of undeveloped beachfront properties. It is resolved by the City Council for the City of Isle Palms, South Carolina, that whereas the City of Isle Palms is committed to the preservation of open space on the island, and whereas the city recognizes that the opportunities for the preservation of the natural environment on an island with a finite amount of land is even more critical, and whereas those portions of the island untouched by development and remaining in their natural state are extremely limited, and whereas the city's comprehensive plan has a goal to quote, promote the maintenance of green spaces throughout the island, end quote, and whereas the city's plan identifies a strategy to quote, investigate the potential for establishing small parks on city-owned undeveloped green spaces, end quote, and whereas the city's local comprehensive beach management plan advocates the preservation of the public's access to the beach, and whereas Charleston County's comprehensive green belt plan identifies quote, view preservation, end quote, as a benefit and function of green space with water features as a key location, and whereas the city endeavors to be responsive to these goals and to preserve one of the few remaining beachfront lots in its natural state. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council, in meeting duly assenable, shall pursue funding for the acquisition of the undeveloped beachfront properties identified as tax map numbers 572-10-00-204 and 572-10-00-244 to preserve this property for scenic view, habitat preservation, and beach access for its natural and historic significance to all residents and visitors to the island. Passed and approved by City Council for the City of Isle Palms, South Carolina, on the 26th day of April 2011. Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
The resolution--
She did take a breath. Could have done it better myself.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as--
Second.
Motion seconded. To save it, we'll have some discussion on this, just to save everybody looking up the tax map numbers. The address in question is 3206 Palm Boulevard, and as you look at that property, you'll see that it is still in its natural, undisturbed state, fully treed, et cetera. It's probably the only one left on the island that is in its natural condition, not really. If you look at it, it looks like it has never been affected by UGO. It is a unique piece of property. It's obviously not cheap, but we have had discussions with the current owner, who obviously is now interested in selling the property. Frankly, we have green belt monies that we can apply. Green belt monies that we have in hand are not sufficient. We're looking for other sources of funds, whether they be grant funds from other locations, or whether we can go back and seek other additional resources from the Green Belt Committee. That's yet to be seen, but we have identified a project that's identified by this resolution, and I'm hoping we can proceed on. There's a good probability we don't come to terms with the current owner with the funds that we have available or can secure, but so be it. If we haven't, if we never try, we'll never get there.
I understand that there are freezers with contents marked as fish.
That's something we'll share with everybody after this meeting, but it could be the way. It's been discussed on the island, and again, if citizens want to come forward and really feel warm towards this, please make yourself known to members of council or staff, or myself, anytime. You know, any individuals want to get involved, help raise money, do whatever we can do to try and secure this last piece of heaven that's been undisturbed on the island, and frankly, it's but virtually in the middle of the island. We keep it in its preserved state. We may put a couple of park benches in it and use it for access to the beach, but it's right in the middle of the island, a very convenient location.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that, and make sure everyone's aware that that would be a tax write-off under our current IRS rules.
Any contrabehance?
Yeah, absolutely. So not only would you be helping the island, but saving tax--
There you go. I like all this. So with that, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard.
All right. Next, we, Real Property discussed the Marina budget and the budgets for the city, and they moved forward to, which moved through the Ways and Means. And lastly, we discussed rents for the island and make sure that all tenants were current, and one tenant was unfortunately behind, and I can tell you, the city administrator has taken an aggressive action on making sure that we are current, and the city is receiving those funds on a timely basis. And with that, the meeting was adjourned, and-- And with that, the meeting was adjourned, and the next meeting is scheduled for May 11th at 8:30 a.m. All welcome.
The only comment I'm going to make is we have invited South Carolina Electric Gas to come and make a presentation to us about what their plans are for increasing the reliability on the island, et cetera, at our next council meeting. So that not only council, but citizens involved can understand what they're trying to do, but it should be encouraging for something we take for granted, granted as being the light beam on it. Thank you very much. Reports from boards and commissions, you have in your possession accommodations tax, zoning appeals, and the planning commission, any comments or discussions? We'll be getting back to the accommodation tax advisory committee since they did not pass a budget out of their committee. They're having another meeting in the first week of May, I think it is, something like that. So we'll be getting back with them. Moving on to second reading, ordinance 2011-1, ordinance amending Title V Planning and Development Chapter IV zoning, Article VII Signs, the City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, providing regulations pertaining to sandwich boards. You have in your possession both the original ordinance as read at first hearing, so I'm reading, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend, to conform with the redrafted as Douglas has presented to us from the planning commission. I have a motion to amend the ordinance, such.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Okay, we're dealing with the ordinance that really adds from the original, the one item that the signs shall be located no more than 15 feet from the primary public entrance door to the business establishment. So, I'd like to make a motion for second reading of the ordinance before us, and amend the, as amended, and suspend the reading.
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any discussions further on sign ordinance dealing with sandwich boards? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Before you go into the next items on the agenda, you may want to announce as part of the planning commission's meeting, the upcoming special meeting between council and the planning commission, associated with parking.
The planning commission is asked to meet with us again. We have scheduled the date of the 11th, if I remember right. 6 o'clock, we'll be meeting with the planning commission, probably here. I'm not, the only question is, is it going to be in court here? Solomson?
Solomson's on court.
That's on Tuesday.
Okay, so we're good.
So we'll be meeting in this room?
And they're not having any court adjournments.
Okay, so we'll be meeting in this room with the planning commission, 6 o'clock. The subject being the parking study that's ongoing. Thank you. I'm just trying to tick off everything.
First reading, soon to be done.
Now we're down to first reading, ordinance to raise the revenue and adopt a budget for the City of Isle of Palms, South Carolina, for the fiscal year July 1st, 2011, 2012. You have in your possession such an ordinance? I just can't find it. There it is. As I indicated in the Ways and Means presentation, this budget, if adopted, will result in no tax increase for the city, will result in continued due diligence on the part of the city staff to reduce our expenses, as our revenues have not materially changed, but we are able to present a balanced budget, and that's what this ordinance deals with. So, can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2011-5, raise the revenue?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
I would just like to add, number one, I think the city and the department heads did a phenomenal job, a lot of work, and a lot of squeezing just to try to get the number where we are right now, and I want to compliment everyone for their hard work and due diligence. I also like to say that we are not raising taxes again this year, and that's something that I think to be noted in these tough economic times. We've been able to manage very tightly to that, and well done to the city.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have just one more comment. I'm not going to support this budget as of yet, just for the fact that I haven't had the opportunity to go back through all the departments and discuss it yet. Since we've got the revenue sheet, obviously the public sector's a little bit different than private sector. We base our expenditures on our revenues, and private sector kind of is a little bit opposite. Give us all the expenditures, then make the revenues meet it. And the fact that we're not raising our taxes, the fact we're borrowing nearly $660,000 of our reserve funds, so, of our savings, basically, we can only continue to do that. We borrowed nearly $700,000 last year to balance our budget. So, and we just have to be aware of that, it's, you know, although it is a budget, a balanced budget, it's because we are continuing to dip into our savings, we can only do that so many more years before we'll have a substantial tax increase, so.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but we actually didn't, our budget anticipated a reduction in our reserves for this year, but in fact, we're not dipping into our reserves in this fiscal year, because of the prudence of the staff and.
Well, no, it has been very prudential, but when you go through and you go through and some of the expenditures, it says, you know, $144,000 to be funded with accumulated surplus from previous years, I understand, but that savings continues to come down. And the fact that we've had a number of, I mean, we've had a wonderful year in accommodations municipal, and I think a lot of that might be spiked from our, you know, the Gulf oil spill. I don't know how much longer that will sustain, but until I can get back and talk to the departments on this as well, I just, I don't feel supportive of passing it yet, although it is a very tight budget.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no. Okay. Moving on, first reading by title only, ordinance 2011-6, an ordinance granting consent for an application for video services and setting a franchise fee. This is, as you can see from the material presented to you, this would be a franchise fee for AT&amp;T to provide video service. Something we don't get now, but it's hard to figure out what they're operating with the, and we don't get now, but let me ask Linda to explain as best she can.
Okay, I will explain only as best I can, because, you know, the technology is a little bit of wizardry for us, but as I understand this, this is just one more menu offering out there by another provider that will allow for TV via the, via your web base, and will allow for a lot more bells and whistles, because everybody's kind of selling features, because everyone seems to be selling the same thing. And this will be AT&amp;T's version. I was able to speak in my recent trip to Atlanta to some people in that market that already have this, in that market, and, you know, there are some things that they enjoy about it, but some of the competitors have some features. Some of the same competitors that we have out here, like Comcast and some others, offer some things that are equally as attractive, so it's just a matter of which provider that you want to opt with. And the AT&amp;T representative could not be here with us tonight to provide the demo and fully explain it, but he will be able to be here prior to second reading of this ordinance. And so if, in fact, there are concerns that you all have between now and second reading, or at that presentation, that would stop you from wanting to grant this franchise, then you'll have the opportunity to do that at that time. I do not know what the timeframe is for a launch. These revenues, this 5%, is not reflected in the revenue line items of the budget that we're considering. So if you guys granted the franchise and the launch was sometime during the next fiscal year, then those would be revenues in addition to what we have projected in our budget, which might offset increases in fuel that might be beyond what we are.
A good part of this is, it makes it interactive, that you can, almost as you do on your internet, you can go back and request a particular TV show as opposed to having them just send it to you. So, you know, it's just more.
It's on demand, that's all.
Right.
And this is required, they're requesting this, but it's the, the franchise would be granted by the state of South Carolina. We as a subset of that establish the fee and the authorization to use our rights and ways, et cetera, so.
Yes, my question is, since most of their infrastructure is already in place, is there, did they announce any impact to what they're already using in the rights and ways?
I did not get any indication that there would be, but we would certainly be able to fully vet those questions before second reading. It seemed more to me, and this was just my perception, it seemed more like it was just one more feature of what they, or multiple more features of what they have out there already.
It seems like if I read their literature, and I'm not sure if I'm the only one who's got a copy.
No, no, everyone got a copy.
If they have fiber optics within a half, roughly half a mile of your property, then you can avail yourself of this feature. And I think the entire island is, it's the backbone of fiber optics all the way down, so most people would be within half a mile of it, so.
I'd rather have the fiber right to my house.
You talk to them.
I have a question. I'd first like to state that I'm a retired Bell South guy, and as such, AT&amp;T is paying, they don't pay me a pension, I didn't go for that. They do pay part of my medical benefits. My question is, we're approving the maximum franchise fee rate, are we, is this the same rate that we are charging Comcast?
No, sir.
No.
It is two percentage points higher than what we are currently charging Comcast, but if, if council were looking for revenues, and in fact, when I thought that we were going to be, when we were going down the, doing the budget work, one of the recommendations that I was going to come forward with was to raise that fee. It was discussed once before, council made the decision not to do it at that time, but if we do not act within the 64 days required by the Secretary of State, then it goes to 2%. It just opts to what the state, the state opt is, which is 2%. 3% is what we are charging Comcast, and we're probably the only local government in the area at 3% with Comcast now. And so I felt, because this was a new service to the island, that 5% was what I put in there, and rather than needing to revisit it periodically, looking for that maximum, it just seemed the wise thing to do to go ahead and have that in there now. That way, you're never going up on anybody, if they're, if they opt for the service.
Going up on them.
You know, rather, you know, you're just opting for the maximum amount now. And you all have heard the presentation, and the theory is that, you know, they're getting the money anyway, so.
Okay.
You know, I, you all may remember, I really wanted to keep the Comcast at 3%. I thought that was a tax increase for our citizens, and I look at this as the same, and I'd like to amend the motion and cap the rate at 3%.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
Well, yeah, one thing I'd like to point out is, this is a brand-new service, does not exist. Nobody's bought it, nobody's paid for it. It is a choice by individuals, therefore, it's not a tax increase, it is what's fee. And, you know, the other thing is, we don't know how they're pricing that model. It costs you, let's say, a hundred bucks for a Comcast TV right now, and you get 3% of that. They come in at 75 for their IPTV service, and we're doing it at 3%. We're losing, we're losing revenue from somebody that's switched from Comcast by not having that 5%. We don't know what their pricing strategy is from that perspective. It's going to be competitive, and it's going to be low to draw customers over. So, I think that, I can't, I can't support reducing it to 3%.
Mr. Mayor, at the same time, I thought I heard the city administrator say that we could increase Comcast's rate from 3% to 5%, should we determine that we need the revenue and want to do that. Do we have the same leeway with this, Reverend?
I believe it's annually that we could, we could make that decision, but I would need to confirm that with the legal aspects of things, which I would have done had we needed to, I knew that we needed to raise it. I knew that that didn't seem to be what council wished to do a year ago when we dealt with the Comcast, because it was, well, a little more than a year ago, I guess, now. And so I didn't expect that it would, that it would work this time either, unless we were pretty desperate for the money to avoid the tax increase, property tax increase.
Okay.
The same comments I made when it came up with Comcast, I think the enlightened mayor and I were the only ones to vote for the 5%. But this is a competitive, this is a competitive industry, and they build into their price the total amount someone's going to pay, and built into that amount is a 5% tax. So if we only take 3%, that leaves 2% on the table. These providers can give it back to the customer, or they can keep it. And if anyone in here thinks they're giving it back to the customer, you're nuts, they're keeping it. So who do you want to get that 2%? Do you want Comcast or Bell South to get it, or do you want the city to get it? And I think the city just needs to get it. This is, this is, if you will, a voluntary-type tax as opposed to a property tax increase where everyone has to pay. And so I'm actually in favor of putting this at 5%. It is not a tax increase.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have before us an amendment to move it from five. Yeah, the amendment was seconded by Sandy, I believe, correct? Okay. We have an amendment before us to move from 5% to 3%. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say aye.
No.
Please say no. Please say no, excuse me.
Arms up for no, please.
No.
No? Okay.
Amendment, yes.
So we have before us ordinance 2011-6, first reading. All in favor of first reading, as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries, I'm going to assume unanimously, with three.
Yes, thank you.
No other comments on that, we'll take that to second reading. Thank you very much. Under miscellaneous business, my only notation is, everybody should either have received it or going to when you get your mail, that on May 3rd is our deadline for letting the municipal association work through the booking. If you want to attend the annual meeting for the municipal associations, this will be in Hilton Head in June 18, 19, 16th to 19, something like that. You go for a minimum of two nights if you book through the association, and you have to let Marie know if you're interested in going, so. Okay, any other comments? Marty, I know you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of CARTA, I'd like to, you've probably seen the announcements in the papers and all, that they've changed some of the Mount Pleasant routes. In fact, one of the Mount Pleasant routes now has a driver's license for it, Wondell High School. What that has done, what that means for Isle Palms and Sullivan's Island, as you know, we're served by what we call Flexer. It's a call-on-demand service, it's free call 24 hours in advance. Due to the rerouting of the buses in Mount Pleasant, it has freed up a good piece of that area that the Flexer bus serves, which now includes mainly Sullivan's Island, Isle of Palms. So it's going to be easier to use that service. In addition, there's a bus stop near the gate to the county park, and I left some schedules back there, there are actual times that you should be able to count on that small bus being there to pick you up. It'll drop you off in town center, if you get the other schedules, you can make it to downtown, West Ashley, North Charleston, so it's a service we need. More importantly, May 7th is, CARTA is going to be promoting CARTA at the beach, not a big promotion, but, and as such, 11:30, the bus will be stopping at the front beach. And as such, at 11:30, the bus will be stopping at the front beach near the ice cream stand right there and there'll be some picture opportunities for whoever would like to be there. I'll get some scheduling information and email information out to the rest of council. But the Flexserve, we, more importantly, we saved the Flexserve. This is the most underperforming route that CARTA has, this and one of the ones in Mount Pleasant. We have done changes to hopefully increase the service and make it easier to use.
The focus of CARTA to the beach is to have people park in Mount Pleasant and take CARTA to the beach.
And not have to park the cars on Alapam's.
Bringing their own car and paying for parking and.
Another solution to the parking problem.
So, the key is to make them aware of Mount Pleasant, that CARTA can bring them to our wonderful beach. Ralph.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Councilman Vitale for all his work on this committee. You talk about real drudge grunt work figuring out bus routes. And I know he's put a lot of time in these meetings and keeping an eye out for the city as he does this. We all, I think we all appreciate that.
Well, Ralph, I think everybody here recognizes that and.
Hopefully Marty will stay on that committee next time.
I'm running out soon here.
It's not quite a labor of love, but it has to be pretty close.
Maybe go get him a little outfit to wear.
Any other items to be brought forward? None heard. I'll entertain a motion. We have no need for an executive session, do we? Okay. Motion, I'd like to move that we adjourn, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adjourn. Seconded?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are out of here. Thank you all for coming.